But I don't remember if it was added or not either.
I don't either. I didn't look to see if I had anything that was updated in my file. Electronically.
Wait, go trees.
I'm not. Wait, go. I'm trying.
You can read both quiet.
Everybody's quiet. Everybody's subdued.
It is Monday morning.
That's right.
Monday morning.
I know, but I mean, if you haven't started your day off with all kinds of weird and interesting calls, you're not living. That is true. That is true. Something's wrong.
Good point, Heather.
Well, if we get them, you get them. Exactly.
Good morning.
Good morning. You got a Red Bull in there? Energy, huh? God.
Go ahead. Call meetings in order from Monday, June 17th, 2024. Going pretty standard, pledge allegiance and let's talk whatever moment we saw.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and justice for all.
On the solace place. Thank you, please say. We need, we have two changes to the agenda. One of them is right off the bat, the minutes from February 15th. And then on the, on the closed session, we add, need to add number six for personnel. And I need a motion in a second.
She's working.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. If I can, where opposed, motion here. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, uh, we're having difficulties with the microphone right now, so.
That's a bad way ahead.
Just for information. And additionally, I just want to point out that I think Mr. Harris has just walked in. So if you'd like to take a minute.
Yeah. Do you want to wait till this or?
I don't know that this will solve itself.
Okay.
I don't know the timeframe of this.
Mr. Harris, or Ron Harris, if you come up and go ahead and give us an indication of, I would like to mention he's from First Baptist Church, or you all three are on.
Thank y'all very much for having me today. I apologize. We had vacation Bible school last week and I missed my appointment to come pray. I was, uh, had my mind in other places, but thank you for having me today. Let's, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our local leaders. Uh, we thank you for the blessing that it is to live in this community, uh, for the families, for the businesses, um, and for the government services that are a part of this community and helping people live lives that thrive. And God, that is the, a desire of this county commission to make this place a good place to live, a place where people enjoy raising their families and, uh, knowing one another and serving their communities. And so, yeah, we thank you for the gift of Allegheny County. Uh, we pray your blessings on this group of commissioners as they meet to discuss the matters of our county. We pray that you would give them great wisdom and discernment. Uh, we pray, Lord, that you would give them dependence on you as the plaque hangs on the wall, "In God We Trust." We pray that that would not be an empty slogan, but would be representative of the state of our hearts, recognizing that all wisdom and all good things come from you, our heavenly Father, and may we draw from your source of wisdom and love to make good decisions that benefit the people of this county. We love you, Father. We thank you for your graciousness and kindness towards us and your son. May we reflect that graciousness and kindness towards one another. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll go back and just mention that we were at the point of amending the agenda and we had two, uh, two items to add and we approved those and they were to, uh, add the minutes from our February meeting and to also include item number six under closed session for personnel. We had a motion in a second and we voted on that and that vote was five zero approval. So now we need to go ahead and approve the minutes of, uh, February the fifth. Need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve, uh, February 5th minutes. Or to write, check, correct any errors.
Same. Have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise, motion carriers, five oh. Thank you. We're under public comments right now. Is anybody signed up or would anybody like to speak under public comments? See none in hearing, no wants. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing minutes. Item number A is the consent agenda and that's pages three through 12 of Rita Miller. Do you have any comments or anything to add?
I do. Um, the license plate agency month in report, the figures, the figures for the license plate agency month in report weren't available as when I submitted this, but the compensation for the month of May was $5,833.03.
Anything else to add?
No, sir.
Any questions about the consent agenda with Rita's additions? If no objections, I'll make a motion to approve. A motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carriers, five oh. Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Moving right along to section B, presentation to the board. Uh, this, uh, Blue Ridge Fiber, Fiber Fest, Deb Clements, please come up, Deb.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, the Fiber Fest was held on June 7th and 8th. Uh, we had beautiful weather and record attendance. We figure there were about 2,500 people that came, but the cars were only counted from nine until two. Uh, we didn't feel we needed parking attendants after two o'clock and, uh, so we let them go. And people continued to come in, so it's probably a little bit higher than 2,500. Uh, we're hoping to do the Fiber Fest again next year on June 6th and 7th, 2025. We have a few, um, improvements that we want to make to our repertoire. More animals, uh, working with the barn a little bit more. We have, uh, spoken to the Piedmont Fiber Shed, which is an organization that, uh, works in the Piedmont area to, uh, discover the needs of the fiber farmers in the Piedmont to see what they need to do to market their product. So they're going to work a little closer with us next year. This was their first year there. They took a survey and, um, got some real good feedback. They told us that a lot of folks from Durham came to the Fiber Fest this year, which we haven't seen in the past. So everybody wanted to get away from the heat into the mountains and I think it benefited the town. So we did have a few hiccups. We had, uh, spotty Wi-Fi. The, um, we provide a service to the community whereby if you have, um, gently used fiber equipment, you can bring it to us and we will sell it for you. Uh, most people, uh, buy this high-end equipment with a credit card and every time somebody needed to take a credit card, they had to go outside to do that because the Wi-Fi was spotty. There was no hot water in the building at all and that was a little bit of a problem. And the bathrooms were also a problem. My daughter-in-law went to work on one of the toilets in the ladies room and managed to fix it herself, but that was a little difficulty. So just wanted you to be aware of what, uh, is going on in the building, as I'm sure you are, but from the perspective of a event holder, those are the little things that, uh, really held us up. We do appreciate for sure the, um, the facility as a whole and it, these things, these little things are going to happen. We just want to help make it better. So if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them and, uh, just don't ask me what a Fiber Fest is because everybody should know by now. This is our sixth year.
Any questions, John? Michelle? Greg? Timmy?
Uh, I'd just like to make a comment that the, uh, I got to visit both days and, uh.
And we appreciate that.
Yeah, my, my.
Especially bringing your wife. That was, that was the highlight of my experience.
Uh, my daughter, my wife made it and, uh, I did eat three funnel cakes over two days and, and my belt shows it now.
Don't think it wasn't noticed.
But the, the food was good and the crowd looked like it was a good crowd.
The vendors reported record sales. So, yeah, it was a great crowd. It was a great crowd.
Uh, we, we look forward to you coming back next year and hope it would be bigger and better. All, we're, we're trying to do things to, to make it a nicer facility and sometimes government moves a little bit slower than, than I would like.
I appreciate all of that, but in that regard, um, we really would appreciate having, giving some advice or talking about how to improve things from the event holder's, uh, perspective. And I think that instead of just going ahead and making the decision on your own, it might be wise of you to, uh, seek the counsel of the folks that use the property. And to that end, I have last month's minutes of the fairgrounds board meeting. I can pass out.
Yeah. Mr. Carter? Danielle?
I usually email these, but I was coming in, I saw it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving right along to, uh, item number two, uh, financial updates, April.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I passed out the monthly finance report just prior to the meeting. It's in front of you. Year-to-date revenue, $20,545,476.75. That actually represents 2% more than our approved general fund budget anticipated for the year. Year-to-date expenditures, $18,640,820.78. That represents 93% of our approved general fund budget for the current year. Bank balance as of this morning, uh, in the checking account, $7,657,155.04. In the savings account, $12,964,153.85. For a total of $20,621,308.89. Uh, net financials for this current year, taking into consideration the revenue and expenditure, And then our audit and fund balance as of, for fiscal year '23, $12,939,320. And then you have May and April represented right below those numbers. Can I answer any questions about that portion of the finance report?
Any questions? If not, keep going.
Your second page is the local option sales tax. A total for this fiscal year, $1,117,347.47. And as compared to last year at this time, $1,094,996.37. So we have, we are ahead from, of last year's number. And that's on the next page, your comparison. And then the last page is the quarter cent sales tax that was approved last fiscal year. Total for this year is $315,775.45. And that is everything that's collected through April. We will receive May and June and that will be put in this current budget as part of our end-of-year audit, um, procedures. So any?
Any questions for April?
Okay. Thank you.
Moving right along to item number three, uh, facilities update, David Spicer.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. As always, I thank you for the opportunity to come and present, um, a summation of things that's been going on. Um, if you'll notice around the administration building, the upper parking lot, uh, has been restocked. So we did get that taken care of. Um, the facility over to transfer facility, um, the Tucson's gone. Of course, I don't have any word as to if repairs is going to be made or anything else. So there's been no word from them on that. Um, we are continuing with the process of a new facility, so I'm sure we'll hear some more about that in a little bit. So co-mingled, we had 5.39 tons. Cardboard, we had 6.81 tons. Scrap metal, we had 10.2 tons, which yielded the county $2,019.60. So I'll let's see, fire grounds, uh, the roof, roof has been repaired on the black building. So those things has been taken care of and those leaks should be stopped now. Uh, the commercial kitchen, um, hopefully by the end of this week and we're, we're pushing, we're pushing our contractors at the end of this week, we'll be ready to have our final inspection from a health department. Um, looking for a final inspection on the hood system tomorrow, uh, so that we can get those things done. Everything is pretty much in place and it's just a few, a few minor things that we need to take care of and we're, we'll be up and going. Um, other than that, the rest of the buildings is, um, pretty far shape right now as far as that goes. Uh, the animal control, uh, report for today, we have one assist with the sheriff's department. We had six well checks. We had five dogs and/or cats picked up. There was 11 running at large, one attack, one quarantine. Uh, six traps were set with a total of 121 hours, 31 calls, 683 miles traveled. I'll entertain any questions that you might have for me at this time.
Questions? Any questions, Greg? Go ahead.
We're going to total on that kitchen.
I do have that, David. Um, as of last week, last week was act, well, week before was AP. It's $100,423.94. And that is counting some salaries and FICA and the things that go along with that because we do have the two full-time already on staff working on cleaning and ordering and getting everything set up with contracts.
Anything else for David?
I got something.
Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
The water thing. Is that? Well, we had to install a new water heater.
So that one went down?
So, no, it's not, it's not ever started. So we, uh, the electricians didn't get, they, they had, uh, they had not got the power to it and the gas company couldn't set the pressure. So because of the, uh, activities that was going on that they, they couldn't get there that day, so they were supposed to be back this week. And a matter of fact, electricians is there now working.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Moving right along to section C, uh, general business for information, ethics complaint, Vice Chairman, uh, Michelle Lufman, and it's, your pages 13 through 14.
On April 9th, I received an email from John Irwin, um, the subject of notice of violation of COVID statutes against Bobby Irwin. It was referenced to A, code of ethics in the Board of Commissioners of Allegheny County, North Carolina, revised 3.724. B, Allegheny County Board of Commissioners rules of procedure revised 3.724. And C, public comments of Wes Brenniger on March 4th, 2024, meeting of the county commissioners. And it reads, dear Madam Vice Chairman, the ethics comments, excuse me, outlined in reference A, our revised code of ethics, in reference B, our board's rules of procedure were disregarded by the chairman, Bobby Irwin, during the March 4th, 2024 meeting. For reference A, section four, the chairman failed to perform the duties of his office, failed to enforce the rules and procedure in reference B. During the public comments of Mr. Wes Brenniger, reference C, within the violation of reference B, rule 10, by number one, directing his comments to a specific member of the board of commissioners, contrary to the reference C, rule 10, A, to only address the board. And number two, raising his voice of a conversational level in a non-civil manner. It is the responsibility of the chairman and the board of commissioners to conduct a meeting in accordance with reference B and by his failure to enforce the rules, the reference failed in his responsibility violating the code of ethics. It is imperatively, it is imperative that we collectively ensure the enforcement of our code of and rules, not merely as a formality, but as a testament to our commitment to uphold the ethics standards and integrity expected of us in capacities with our public officials, respectfully submitted, John U. Irwin, Irwin, excuse me, John U. Irwin, Senior Commissioner. So John and I, um, he sent this to me on April 9th and we corresponded between April 9th and April 11th about this. And I did not understand that I needed as co-chair to make the, the rest of the board aware of this. So I am making the rest of the board aware of this, um, this notification from Commissioner Irwin. Commissioner John Irwin, sorry. County manager, is there anything else that I need to do?
Am I going to jail?
I don't determine that. So I think, I think now our county attorney has also been informed and aware of the complaint. And I think she may have some comments regarding an additional section of your code that, that she can describe to you.
So I certainly understand that we, you guys voted, um, to add the additional section for, uh, the censure and now, Michelle, you're following along, um, with that additional portion, um, which I think was paragraph, it was step one, um, which was to alert, um, the board and once made aware of the concern, then the chair shall make the full board aware, um, and then schedule a meeting with the member in question, the county attorney, to review concerns and address it properly. So we haven't had that meeting, um, you know, and certainly that, that's available because it is part of that procedure. But I would refer back to your rules of procedure, page five, um, where if you look specifically under rule 12, uh, conduct of debate and, uh, rule 12, powers of the chair, um, the power of the chair is to determine whether a speaker has gone beyond reasonable standards of courtesy, um, in his or her remarks and to entertain and rule on objections from other members, uh, on this ground. I know nothing was said at the time, but, you know, in determining whether anything needs to be done further, um, my opinion would be no because that is the, within the authority of the chair. Uh, you know, we could certainly still meet and discuss if necessary, but my feeling is legally, I don't think there's anything further to debate or go forward with.
Would just like for Commissioner John Irwin to know that I did not do this on purpose or leave anything out of purpose. I, I was just, was not aware that we, we needed to take that, I would say. I was just, was not aware that we needed to take that final step.
Anything else, Heather? Any comments or questions?
Yes, I've got some questions. County manager, how many months did we work on the Rules of Procedures and revisions for the Code of Conduct, Code of Ethics?
Just an estimate, it would probably be six to eight months. It was on several different agendas.
Subject that we brought up constantly, I would know that I was pressing, that we want, that we wanted to give people an opportunity to address any allegations that were made against them. Now, I just, I disagree with the learned attorney in that the chair has the ability to determine. Behind me is the rules that we follow for public comments. It's big, bold lettering. It says, anyone's, that you address all comments to the Board of Commissioners. I think the chair also has a responsibility to enforce the provisions that the council, the committee has voted on. That was my objection. Nothing was being said, yet clear violations were made. So the procedure was, this should not have come out in public. It's very simple. I got a call from Commissioner Greg Walker Friday night, whenever he picked up his agenda, wanting to know what this matter was concerning. He had never been notified. If we, if, it's kind of like the ordinances that we went over. We had some that were out of date. If we are not going to look at what our procedures are, much less enforce them, why have them? All the comments I have, Mr. Chair. Any other comments? Go ahead, Gary.
The reason I voted against this Code of Ethics is it ain't worth the paper it's written on. This here is just proven fact. That's all I got to say about it.
Me.
So you're saying there's, there's nothing that we need to move forward with? Is that what you're saying?
Well, if you want to have a meeting, then we certainly can have a meeting to discuss this further if you want, because that, that could go forward, absolutely, and that's what the procedure says.
Well, the procedure thing, Chairman, the miss in the procedure thing, like far as people coming in here and speaking, and I agree, they should direct their differences or their opinions to the board, just like our says, but I don't think it's a Code of Ethics thing that, you know, because if you're not careful, you know, we, we miss stuff all the time and we're, we're not perfect in these things that, I mean, even the papers or rules, there's a lot that I'm still learning. I know Bobby's been here a lot longer, but I think if we start doing that and we miss something that is a procedural thing and we're not flagrantly, you know, it's doing it on purpose, I don't think we can pull up a Code of, Code of Ethics deal. So I just, it doesn't make sense to me on this particular situation, so we could go down a bunch of rabbit holes.
Anything else, Michelle?
You know, I just want to say that that incident that happened in March, I was taken aback by it, you know, humanly. I was taken aback. It happened so quickly, and, you know, it did go on for a very long extended period of time. And I just kind of sat here with my mouth wound open, and I'm, I'm just trying to relate to Bobby because I, you know, I'm not excusing the behavior that happened, but, you know, I just wasn't expecting that. And I can't say that if I was sitting in his shoes, that I would have really known what to say to, to cut it off. It didn't go on and on. I mean, Mayor Brenniger got up and he said what he had to say at Irwin, and it was over. And I think we all just kind of sat here like, we kind of came out of the field. Can't say as a human being that I would have been able to think quickly enough to say stop. So that's my last.
John?
Hey, I'd like to read something from Robert's Rules of Order, which we say that we will follow. Elected officers, chairman or president, Rule Number Six, this is forty-seven, chapter forty-seven, is responsibility, quote, "to enforce the rules related to debate and those relating to order and decor within the assembly," unquote. Chair runs the committee. And it, it was a little putting off, it was surprising, but, got to know the rules, you've got to enforce them. If you aren't going to enforce them, why have them? Very simple. I'm sorry that this has come to the, out into the public in the manner that it has. Rules of Procedure or the appendix dictates how it's supposed to go. If it had been followed, it wouldn't have come to the public, to the public until after everything had been debated, discussed. I agree, it is minor. The chair should have been, should have looked into it and said, hey, be aware that you need to enforce the rules that we have posted on the wall, the Rules of Procedure, let it go with that. And I have a lot more that I'm thinking of, but I will keep it to myself. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Michelle?
Well, Bobby, if this were to happen next time, do you think that you can enforce those rules on the, on the law?
I think every situation would probably be a little different. It is not my intention to stifle anybody from saying what they want to say during public comments. I agree that it is not in the best intentions to single out a certain person on the board. Sometimes the people in the community see something that they don't approve of, or they don't like, or the majority of people have questions with. So it's, it's a slippery slope when you try to stifle people's free speech. Sometimes it happens so fast, you know, you can't unring the bell. Once something's been said, it's been said. What I would do in the future, or what any chairman would do in the future, I think depends on the situation. I had no idea what that person, or any person's going to say when they come up to the board to speak in public comments. I don't think, in all my years, that we've had very many outbursts unlike some of these government meetings where people protest and you know something's going to happen. People come in here very friendly and most of the time leave very friendly. They've just had their opportunity to speak to their situation. So I, I don't like when a single person is, is called out, but I have no idea what the speaker's going to say before they, before it comes out of their mouth. So I think it's going to be basically on a case-by-case basis. I defer to Heather if, if I need to go to jail or whatever.
Only recommendation that I could have would be if there was a chance that someone does come for another public comment and their comment is inappropriate or directed towards an individual commissioner, you could remind them that their, their comments need to be made, based on the rules, that their comment needs to be made to the entire commissioners, you know, board, not just an individual, that they must be civil. And I know it's a little difficult to do this, but if necessary, interrupt someone and remind them of what the rules are. I think that's the only thing that is possible, and I know it's, excuse me, I know it's difficult in the moment when someone is going maybe on a little bit of a rant, but I think that's your, your opportunity to then mention to them or repeat to them. And I know it's a little difficult because you have to raise your voice above theirs. So that does make it a little more confrontational, so it's, it's a difficult situation. So I'd say you could remind them of the rules, and if they don't comply with what the rules are, you could ask them to step away, or that their time is up. But yeah, it's going to depend on each individual's situation, and it will, it's not a blanket, it's going to depend on what's being said and how it's being directed at either an individual or the entire board.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Carter?
Just to add, the, the only other option that I see would be to read the rules each time before your public comment section. And I know that seems favorable among the expressions that I just saw from the board members, but that would be the only thing in addition to what Heather has said to get the point across. The other thing that I, I think needs to be addressed is the follow-up if there is a need for the meeting to occur. Do not, I am not a part of that meeting. That meeting, in this case, I believe, would take place with Commissioner Lufman being the chair, Commissioner John as the one who made the complaint. It actually says, a member in question, the county attorney. So the determination if that meeting needs to occur, that's, that's the conclusion of what step one, that paragraph says.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the attorney.
Go ahead.
Do I have the ability to withdraw the complaint?
I don't know if we have addressed that. I don't, I don't know of anything that just jumps out at me that, in that section, which says that there could be a withdrawal, but I think we can conclude it with, do we need to have that additional meeting? And that's...
Avoid an additional meeting, withdraw of the complaint? Would that be out of order?
Paragraph actually says that the...
The purpose of the complaint was draw the attention that we should be enforcing the Rules of Procedure that we have voted on.
I don't, I don't think you have a...
I think that I've accomplished what I desired to accomplish.
So you don't want an extra meeting?
I think that I made my point, that we need to, if we're going to have a Code of Ethics, if we, or correction, a Code of Procedures, rules to go by, that they need to be enforced. Believe that we have also given a reasonable accommodation to do that. I mean, Bobby's sitting there with signs telling people, you've only got three minutes, so that he can warn them. I, going over the rules prior to public comments, very simple, please be civil, limit to three minutes, and address the committee and not the individuals. It just takes about 30 seconds to do that. I think that would, that would take care of it. And I'll be glad to withdraw my complaint, since we haven't followed the procedures anyway. Why question whether I can or cannot withdraw the complaint? If necessary, I'll request a vote of the committee to waive the rules.
I don't think there's any, there would be any issue to withdraw, because there's nothing that we've mentioned about that, so, I mean, it was, I think the...
Chair, I withdraw my complaint.
Next item. I just wanted to add to that. I, I do, through, you know, hearing some things about the board and everything, I think in this conversation, it does need to be reminded that he has all power of proceedings in this. So, you know, I know you can't catch things quick, I mean, I understand all that, we're all human, but the point is, you do have that power, and if somebody is out of hand, you do have the power to stop them in mid-speech. And I know sometimes, you, you can't control everybody's emotions and everything, but I think sometimes, you know, it needs to be reminded that you do have that power of, not that you need a lot of power, but anyway, there is a lot put on you and responsibility, but at the same time, you need to remember that it doesn't matter who's talking or whatever, you have that power to follow procedures and whatever, but that's all I want to say.
I get, a recommendation from the attorney, do we ask for consensus of the board if we're going to go to the full circuit of this complaint? Or do we go with Commissioner Irwin's request to withdraw the complaint? Can you do that in a consensus?
Yeah, well, you're not, this is for information anyway, so it's not requiring a vote or anything. So if the, if the complaint has been withdrawn, I don't, I don't think there's anything else further to do. I mean, you certainly, if, if the complaint hadn't been withdrawn, then you could have a consensus of whether or not to move forward with a meeting, per the rules, with me, and to discuss anything further, but the complaint was withdrawn, so I don't think there's anything further that does need to be done at this point.
Vice Chair, Michelle Lufman, do you have any, anything else to add to this procedure?
No, I think that it, he's requested it be withdrawn, so I think we withdraw it and move forward.
That being said, we will move along to, is there any other discussion or comments? With that being said, we'll move along to section D, general business. These, these items are for action. Let's see, start out with reevaluation contract, Rita Miller.
So we did have a request for qualifications committee, and we interviewed Ron Vincent with Vincent Valuations, and ultimately, the committee agreed to present this to the board for approval, so that we can move forward with contracting with Vincent Valuations.
Mr. Carter, any comments? Any questions or comments from the board?
I have one comment, Mr. Chair. I would make the motion that we approve the contract with the addition of the review sheet from the county attorney.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor?
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries five oh, thank you Rita.
Thank you. 2027 is when it will be effective, but they will be, um, beginning work this fall. So, and we're looking at some different avenues of keeping the public informed as what's going on and when they're going to be in your neighborhood.
Any, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to item number two, that would be Danielle on the surplus vehicle sealed bids.
This was presented to y'all a couple meetings ago. We had seven people that submitted bids, um, not on all of the vehicles, but a total of seven people. Um, let me get to, so you can see better. That was just a notice that we put in the paper. Um, and now we have the bids. This is our bid tab. The highest bidder for the Osmo bill was Brian Killian at $350. Daniel Rotten bid the same amount, but withdrew his bid. He said he'd gotten, he'd spent enough money because he won two of the other ones later on. Uh, Mark Purdue bid 352 on the Malibu. Uh, Daniel Rotten bid $800 on the Ford F-150. And Daniel also bid $5,500 on the 2010 Dodge, which was the ambulance. So we're looking for approval of those bids so we can proceed forward with financial transactions and the switching over of titles.
Any questions about the bids?
Motion to approve plus.
Second. A motion in a second. Danielle, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries five oh.
I do have one question. Is there a time limit when these have to be moved? Because I know they're part across from the fire department and all their leaders and their business leaders, but they were asking when they might be moved.
Well, we had to wait to get y'all's approval of it. Once they, y'all have approved it all, so we'll start taking care of those financial transactions and they should be moved fairly quickly. Yeah, we'll take care of all that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Moving right along to, um, item number three, budget amendment, uh, general fund number 18 kitchen construction, uh, April ham, page 44.
So in your package, you do have general fund budget amendment number 18. Uh, we're taking 50,000 of the public saving interest, public savings interest that we have earned this year that was not anticipated and adding that to the contractor and construction expense for the kitchen at the Black Building. And that should finish that up. Any questions?
Any comments? Okay, we need a motion in a second on item number three.
Second.
A motion in a second. Danielle's okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries five oh. Item number four, general fund again, uh, grant equipment for, uh, April ham, page 45.
And this is actually for law enforcement. This is part of their GCC grant, Governor's Crime Commission grant. They've received 29,335 in additional monies for grant equipment, so we just need to budget that for them. And that is in this current fiscal year.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Five oh, vote carries five oh. Uh, April again, jail, jail insurance.
This is for inmate insurance. Uh, the jail actually received $10,746 in some COVID fund reimbursement as part of the American Rescue Funds, and we just need to, to reimburse that expense in that expense line.
A motion in a second. Motion to approve. Motion in a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five oh, thank you. Um, April again, item number six.
The next is a line item transfer. This was actually presented to the board at the last meeting. This is the JCPC line item transfer in the amount of $6,904 to add to this current fiscal year. Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments? Motion in a second, please.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Danielle, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries five oh. April again, uh, transfer for dispatch, item number seven.
Your next one is actually for the dispatch center from Daniel Rotten. It's just transferring $7,500 out of part-time pay to cover some additional overtime.
Questions or comments? Want to need a motion in a second?
Motion to approve the line item transfer for dispatch.
Motion in a second, comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed likewise? Thank you. Motion carries five oh. Item number seven, transfer for DSS, April, hang on.
This was submitted by Stacy Pressnell, the director of DSS, and this is to take care of some security upgrades and I believe some continuing education and supplies.
Questions or comments?
How much is the total? Yeah, it's, it's laid out right there for you, Greg.
Motion in a second. Um, Greg, I'm sorry, you got a.
It was the first.
Okay.
All those, uh, any questions, comment? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five oh. Item number nine, tax department, uh, April, uh, line item transfer, page 50.
The next one's actually from Rita Miller, our tax administrator, just to cover postage for the outgoing tax bills.
Questions or comments? A motion in a second.
Approve the line item transfer, tax department.
Any, any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Motion carries five oh. Item number 10, line item transfer for E-911 and, uh, PSAP April.
And I believe this is our last one this morning. This is to cover a maintenance contract that's, uh, associated with our telecommunications center. It is grant money through our E-911 and PSAP state grant. It's just moving the money around and it is available.
Questions or comments? Need a motion in a second, please.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five oh. That concludes, uh, Section D. Moving right along to Section E, county manager comments, planning inspections and other reports.
You, you've got a copy on page 52 of your planning inspections, uh, monthly report. Encourage you to review that. Mr. Spicer referred to the transfer facility, uh, earlier in his, uh, conversation with the board, and I just wanted to let you know that I just received what they're calling phase one of the transfer facility, and I'll be reviewing that today. But it looks like we're going to have that in two phases. Phase one will be concept, you know, conceptual, and then two will be final. So I'll get the phase one to you for information at your next meeting. Next one is, it's just one I feel like I need to say. You know, our employees are, are our family. They're our team. They're the ones that get out there each and every day and get whatever their assigned task done is. And from time to time, I hear, uh, either from an employee or from others in the presence of, uh, these, these things that happen where they're, I want to say that they're, they're challenged with keeping their composure. I guess I'll put it that way. And that ranges from, anywhere from a sidebar discussion at the gas station to a, a meeting in here. And, you know, our employees aren't dartboards. They're not targets. They're not available, you know, to receive that type of criticism. And as long as I'm around, I'm not going to let it happen. And I hope that everyone understands that there's a process. And I understand that there are frustrations and, you know, vents and all that, but, uh, our, our family's not designed for that. If there, if there are problems or questions or summons or whatever that occurs, bring them to the right person. Bring them to me and let me know about them. And the next item is, is just, again, we, we've had a lot of conversations about the fairgrounds and the Black Building and that whole facility. And still kind of waiting on some direction from the board. I know that Commissioner Timmy talked about it at a previous meeting during comment time. I, I don't have to remind the board that you own that property, that you own that Black Building. I don't have to remind you of that. There are changes, as we all know, being made to that Black Building. Changes that sometimes aren't in our control, just like David Spicer pointed out. When, when, you know, gas people couldn't get there to make the water heater work, there wasn't any hot water. That's beyond our control at this point. If there is going to be anything done, it, it probably needs to be done, going back to what Commissioner Timmy said. But, you know, all I've heard in the last couple of months is the work on that Black Building. And honestly, I'm yet to hear anything positive about it. I know we've talked about it, David, you, you're in it every day. There's some good things happening at that Black Building, construction-wise. And nobody wants to peek out from under the rock to say it, but there is. There's going to be a lot of good things that happen once that process starts. We have the right people in the right place to do the right thing. And nobody wants to talk about that. Nobody wants to promote that. And then we have, um, I'll call it an additional kitchen that's been put in as a request. And I think there's been some questions about it. And not, not having the complete sides or stories of it, I just want to say, as, as the county manager, once we get through this process and once we make a determination if there are any questions or comments that remain about that additional kitchen, we have the funding to take care of that if we need to. I guess I'll put it that way. That's all I've got today, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Uh, I just want to say one thing while Deb is here. If you could get us a copy of the bylaws for the fairgrounds, uh, tried unsuccessfully to get them, but if you could provide us with a copy, we'd appreciate it.
I want to ask something, Mike, where the cost to rent the Black Building, some bad event out there.
I'd have to look. Deb may know right off the bat, the cost for the Black Building.
Come on, please, to the microphone.
Well, it depends on your, uh, status. There's a difference, there's a scale. If you're going to just take the Black Building and the barn, like we do, and we're nonprofit, we're a 501(c)(3). I think we paid $300 to rent it.
I think you voted to not make the difference between nonprofits and for-profits.
Having an event out there, someone's having an event and they use a camper space, who gets the money off the camper space?
You do. I collected all the campers. Um, I went on Sunday morning. The campers that were there for Thursday and Friday paid me on Saturday before they left the facility. Uh, on Sunday, the campers that stayed three nights, I went down, when I picked up my last, uh, trailer on Sunday morning, I went down through the campground and collected everybody's check.
So you just do it for your event, you don't do it for the whole fairground?
No.
Esther.
So this particular event, you think it was $300 that y'all paid rent for this particular event, correct?
Yeah, yes.
And that's for the barn and the, uh, Black Building?
Correct.
So you all charge for vendors, right?
Correct.
Vendors, in other words, vendors pay you guys?
Mm-hmm.
My question is, how much, okay, for $300, how much does the fairgrounds commit to put back into that facility, say, for if there needs to be upgrades or? I guess my question is, is there anything the fairgrounds invest back into the fairgrounds or the Black Building?
The fairgrounds committee? Everything we get goes back into the fairgrounds. So whatever fundraisers we have, the $300 that we paid is paid into the county. So that doesn't go to the fairgrounds board.
But what monies does the fairground spend on the fairgrounds? That's what I'm saying. Like, do they buy gravel or do they, you know, anything that may be needed is what I'm trying to get at? Is there anything invested back into the fairgrounds, uh, site?
Sure. The entire whole fairgrounds was built back in the day with volunteer.
I know, but I mean, I'm talking about right now.
Everything we get goes back into the fairgrounds in one way or the other.
So.
So the most recent, uh, thing that I can think of off the top of my head, uh, we just purchased a rake to pull behind the tractor. Uh, if we hadn't had the rake to straighten out the, uh, mess that was left in the barn, we wouldn't have been able to have our event. It was difficult to walk through the wood chips. It was impossible to move the, um, panels around because there was two and a half feet of wood chips in the barn, and anybody with mobility issues couldn't get through there until later on Saturday when people had driven through. The woman who brought her llamas as an exhibit got stuck in, in the barn. So, uh, I guess to answer your question, uh, any funds that we have that the fairgrounds, and the fairgrounds board being a totally separate thing from anything else, uh, any of the funds that we get go back into the fairgrounds eventually. So we did, uh, provide some of the funding for the sign, and it was my under. And it was my understanding that we were supposed to get 50% of the advertising revenue, which I don't believe that we've ever seen.
So I guess that's my point, is I was out there a couple of times just looking to see however thing, checking out the kitchen. And I guess my point is, that's a perfect example of, that's a pretty good-sized group for $300. We paid for electric, we paid for getting the trash off, paid for water. See, that's where I'm saying we're off. And I get, our facility needs to be for the, for, you know, our community. And I get that. And but we also need to be able to, you know, we need to, we're not trying to make money, but we really need to get it fixed or what monies we are getting, that we can, say for instance, the doors on the black building. From the time I was in school, those doors, you know, those doors that you open and shut to go in and out, they're horrible. But the thing is, if the county, you know, there needs to be a different setup to where the money's going back into it. And we can do those things. We can, you know, use some of those monies to do like it used to be, where they raised money and the monies that they got, they did do things. They built, you know, the seating area or the picnic shelter. So that's what we add to what Michael was saying, was, you know, we need to try to corral some, you know, like I said, I'm fine with, we could do a work session. I would like for the, you know, at least the chairman to come over here, maybe this treasurer. Bring us what he's got, the books, you know, the bylaws, whatever, and see what monies, say for instance, we can look into last year's and see, you know, the monies they got, you know, I know they spent a lot for advertising, but same time, there needs to be a different process. And like I said earlier, I've been here for a couple of years just trying to figure out this and that, and who does what and this. But we have a facility over there. If it was set up correctly, I think it could strive. And I think it could get better and better and better. And I also agree with Michael, as we're trying to improve it, it is, it's not going to happen overnight. But as we try to improve it, I think it's a good idea, you know, people enjoy it. And there is, there are some good things, you know, yeah, the hot water heater might not have worked this time. The kitchen, and I find this a lot in construction, in my own experience, I have customers sometimes that go to the project before it's half-finished, and I get a big, long email, like asking why this is this way, why this is that way. And I'm like, we're not done. We're not finished. So once that's finished, in the way that other auxiliary kitchen's done, it's going to be a nice setup. And another year turnaround here, it will, it will be really nice, and it will be a good deal. Really appreciate what David's been doing, because I know, as from his position, that that's trying to coordinate the different things, the different people. You got to work with a lot of different folks that does different trades. And they're not sitting at their desk waiting for your phone call to call them and say, I'm coming right now. That doesn't happen anymore. So, never has happened, really. But anyway, do appreciate that. But I don't know how I got off on that. But anyway, I do think, you know, I'm ready to arrange a work session and sit down and talk about what we can do to make this better. You know, I'm willing to listen to some ideas and stuff, but we got, we got something here that we can just leave it sitting and we let it ride like it is, and it's never going to get better. The buildings, you know, we're always going to be a strain to repair them. It's going to be a strain to keep it up. I mean, just like we're talking about here, it's going to be constantly, we're spending tons more money that we could be investing into that fairground. So I think we, I think that's where we need to go with this. And I'm going to leave it up to you guys when a good time to do that work session. And I do realize, too, everybody has different things. And I know one time we arranged this and we couldn't get people to come. Here's my thing. I'm a busy guy. And I have a lot of commitments I have to do. But there's a lot of things that I've changed so I can come and do work sessions, and I can come and do meetings that I have to do because they're very important. And I took that on. Now, I took that on, and that's what I did, and that's what I agreed to do. So I think, try to get up a work session date and try to get people that come in that can and people can't, you know, or give them plenty of time and that's it. That's the way I look at it.
Thank you. John, you had a quick comment?
Well, that and some information. People laugh at me because I bring in my big books. I learned a long time ago, in the military, you better be able to back things up, and if you don't, you're going to get it. The budget that we passed also included a fee schedule. The fee schedule for '24, '25 fiscal year at the Allegheny Parks and Recreation Fairgrounds. The black building is $150 a day or $1,000 a week. That is what we agreed to. And that, you had a two-day event, that's where the $300 is.
It was my understanding that the fee was for your event.
No. If you're renting the black building according to what we passed, $150 a day, if your event was two days, then that would have been $300 if it had been three days. Now, as far as the fairgrounds contribution, the tractor that is at the fairgrounds is paid for by the fairgrounds committee.
That's correct.
However, just like the BDC, the county looked the other way. As a matter of fact, the county let them have the timber that was on that mountain. So the fairgrounds committee sold the timber, the fairgrounds committee got the money. County didn't get it. There's still, whenever I was on the fairgrounds committee, there was 20-some thousand dollars that was sitting in the kitty that fairgrounds committee could spend. Fairgrounds committee, if memory serves me correct, paid half for the electronic sign that is out there right now. Also, the other half was paid by the TDA. There's a number of items that are out there that were purchased by the fairgrounds committee. Bobby, you've asked for a reckoning of what equipment belonged to the fairgrounds, what equipment belonged to the county. We've gone over that, I don't know how many times, and that even precedes Michael Carter being here. So in the past, the fairgrounds committee has provided funding for various things in the fairgrounds. But we keep on losing sight that fairgrounds committee is not an action committee, it is an advisory committee. Fairgrounds is owned by the county. Now, the fairgrounds committee did own that property at one time, but they dedicated it to the county because they couldn't keep it up. Fairgrounds committee at one time was, I believe, was over 150 members.
Yes.
Whenever you get the bylaws, if you look at the old bylaws, which I have a copy of, but I didn't know the fairgrounds committee was going to come up, or I would have brought my fairgrounds committee book. I have a copy of that. It was supposed to be revised with new bylaws, and I left that committee six, five, five to six years ago. I don't know if it's happened. It's an area, you are correct, Commissioner Evans, is something that has got to be laid out. It has got to be solidified because we keep on losing sight, and everybody assumes that we can do this and we can do that. And you just can't argue with it because it's never been solidified. It's got to be put down in writing. It's got to be established. If not, five years from now, we're going to be, the public will hear this same discussion. But I just wanted to let you know, because this precedes you being on the fairgrounds board. They did contribute. There is money there. And as far as the advertisement, I do not know where that's been codified, that half the money from the advertisement assigned is going to go to the fairgrounds committee. That's a new one on me.
I don't have anything to add to it. But the county did pay a small percent of that sign. I will say that, but...
But it was the fairgrounds committee?
Yeah. They paid a, it's in a pie. It's in a pie chart, but the county had a little piece of it.
A small piece. And the TDA was more involved with that. That's all my comments on that subject. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Any other comments from anybody? I would like to say that I'm going on 10 years as being a commissioner, and this has been an ongoing problem for 10 years. And at some point, and I would hope it would be in the near future, we could finalize how this facility is run. It is the largest venue in the county. And it, in the last two years, I think it's been used more, and it's drawn in more people to the county, economic development. That's what we're all after, and the fairgrounds has provided that. And it's venues like this, we have all these different races, we have the fairground, the Fiber Fest, we have all of our Halloween events. There's so many different events, the carnival, all of that. That brings money to the county. So we've got to, we've got to get a handle on how this thing is run. At one time, the county had done a rough estimate of what it costs to run the fairgrounds a year, and it was a staggering amount of money. And the fairgrounds committee, at that time, there was no way that they could handle it. It was over $100,000 a year just in expenses. And something, something has to be done in the near future. And I think a good starting point is if you get us a copy of the current bylaws and give us a place to start, then we can set up some type of meeting, work sessions, and around that. Carter?
I was going to say, your next meeting is July 1. And typically, you have your work sessions prior to your evening meeting. And in the past, those work sessions have started at 4:00. So you have an opportunity on July 1. Your next evening meeting would be August the 5. And I think, once you get into September, you're getting too far down the road. So if you're wanting to have a work session with the fairgrounds board, I would recommend that you look at either July 1 or August the 5 at 4:00 to set that meeting.
May I? I would suggest, if you're going to do that, August, because we have a meeting coming up in July, that we would be...
I don't think we can put it off till August. I think we're ready to move. And we will have a work session, I think it's consensus of the board, July the 1 at 4:00. And Mr. Carter will make arrangements and talk to Zach at the fairgrounds committee. And A, being the 17th, that's over two weeks ahead. People should be able to make their plans. Ever have we want to set this work session up and discuss it. And usually, we have a two-hour meeting for a work session. Sometimes, we try to have two or three different subjects. But I think this one subject will probably take that two hours.
And can I ask what the general agenda will be?
I would say, direction for the facilities moving forward would be the goal. If I'm incorrect, board, please correct me.
I think that with the advisory board, of the fairgrounds advisory board and the government, how we're going to, how we're going to look at the future, how the fairgrounds is going to be, how the fairgrounds is going to be run.
And how we can work together? That would be, how we can work together?
Yes. There always has to be, everything, we have to work together. It's, you know, we can't do it by ourselves. You can't do it by yourselves. But there has to be a, I think a, I think for better word, a final authority on what happens at the fairgrounds. We're running into a lot of legal issues lately with what groups can use it, what groups can't use it. We, there's a multitude of things that we need to really hash out. So, Mr. Carter, it's a consensus of the board. Timmy, you got something to say?
Something else I think would be helpful, I guess we would probably send Zach an email just to tell him about it. But I think it'd be helpful if they could bring their bylaws and their finances, because that would be good, as we're talking, you know. I think it'd be good that we have information on both sides.
If you can get those as soon as you can to Michael, and then we can make copies and everything, and Heather will have a chance to look at it also.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that the bylaws be provided prior to the meeting so that you can review them and look at them and digest them. I would also recommend that Amy Lucas be invited to that meeting because there's a lot of agricultural events that take place out there. They would have a piece of the pie.
Mr. Carter? Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
We're on to Commissioner's comments. And let's see, start with John today.
Thank you. It's refreshing that we are going to be looking at the fairgrounds, because frankly, it's an area that's been a, it's been a burr under the saddle. It's been a constant, it seems, that it comes up, and we wonder what in the world's going to happen. Bobby alluded to the cost to the county. If I remember correct, our electric bill alone is over $1,000 a month. We turn on the lights out there, it costs. We recently had an event, rodeo that came up. They had to bring in dirt. Correct me if I'm wrong, David. They had to bring in dirt. The reason why they had to bring in dirt was because of the metal, the glass that had been left over from demolition derbies. It is a constant drain on the county. We cut the grass. Randy's out there riding that mower. It doesn't happen in 15 minutes. So that is a county employee that's being tied up for maintenance out there. We spent about $30,000 on the bathrooms. We have placed county money to do campgrounds. We are providing water, sewer for our campsites, but it's being underutilized. There's plenty of people that travel through Allegheny There's plenty of people that travel through Allegheny County, going to the park in Virginia, where they can ride their horses that stop off in Allegheny County. They'll pick up a pizza at Becky's and continue on. I was surprised during my service in, in the Marine Corps, where I had a Texican, I mentioned that I, that I lived close to Galax, Virginia, and he said, "Oh yeah, I know Galax." I was surprised, I looked at him and said, "How in the world do you know Galax, Virginia?" He said, "That's where we get our horses." A Texican comes to Galax to get his horses. Going to be right around Sparta, North Carolina. We got a barn, we've got camping sites, we've got a place for them to put their horses at night while they camp if they wanted to. We're, we're missing out on a lot. I keep on getting asked, ask a couple of questions about the kitchen. And it is particularly irritating to me because one of the problems that we have as county Commissioners is very simple. A lot of what happens in this county, we have no control of. Just later, the state of North Carolina will only give us the powers that it wants to give us, and they are going to keep as much power as they can. So it's limited. We have very limited power, power over the budget. The vast majority of the budget is dictated. We have no control over it. We are looking at a $30 million budget this year. What you do not realize is Department of Social Services is basically funded by the federal and state government. Their budget will exceed ours by $15 million, 45 million. Generally, that is basically, in the years past, whenever I would ask Ms. Osborn, "What's your budget?", it was going to be half additional to what the county had. So our 30, transposing that, that'd be $45 million in Department of Social Services. Our portion is very little whenever you start looking at it. So we have to feed the prisoners. If we can't feed them, we've got to send them somewhere that they can feed them, just like whenever the HVAC system went out this winter. We had to send the prisoners to Ash County, and we had to pay them. Whenever we go out for bids, and we get one bid on a county contract, that tells us something. And it is telling whenever we have the winner of that bid come to the county and say, "I got to have my check in two weeks. If you don't, my employees are going to suffer." Whenever I see that, let me tell you. He's got a problem, he's got to have the money right away to cover his employees', his payroll. Well, if that, if that one bidder goes under, and they happen to have the contract for the county, the county's got to come up with something. Prisoners are going to be fed, one way or the other, whether we're going to pay another county to do it, or we're going to do it. We've got to have permanency. Cannot be a question mark. So we took responsibility upon our shoulders to assume this responsibility at the recommendation of our county manager. It's something that we felt that we needed to do, it was important, and that is what we have done. We did everything out in the open. So that, that's there. We will assume that responsibility, we have placed it in there. Yes, there was a cost, but we are projecting that we will actually be reducing our expenditures by doing this. Now, as county Commissioners, we are open to the public. We dictate how things are going to be done through county ordinances. If we pass an ordinance, we expect it to be enforced. Animal control, it comes to mind. Well, we put in an animal control ordinance, and it cost us, what, $42,000 for those dogs? That's the cost of government. The alternative is, you have no ordinance, and you let things just run wild. What the public is not aware of, two years ago, we had a incident where a lady was mauled by dogs. Ended up in Baptist Hospital, needing plastic surgery for her injuries. Realized then that our animal control ordinance was a little bit lacking, so we rewrote it. Thank God the people in this county do not believe in suing. If this had been Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, this county would have been in the docket, and we would have paid dearly. You may not like a lot of things that the county Commissioners do, but we have to look at the big picture. We also have to look into the future. And we also look in the past on how things have been done in the past, and do we want to continue with that, where the mistakes were made. Government is like sausage. You may or may not like the end product, but I guarantee you, you don't want to watch the process. So you may criticize us. If you could do better, in two years, there will be an election. Put up or shut up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Cheryl?
I just want to kind of piggyback off what Tom said about the kitchen. My job to hear what the public has to say and do the public's wish. I hear a lot of complaints about this kitchen, but to step back for a minute and realize why we did it, there was a reason why we did it. We had to get control of the cost. We had a contractor who was constantly contacting us, ways, where did that end? To get control of the cost. Number two, we had to get control, that if we only had one bidder, and what if this, God forbid, contractor went out of, out of operation? We would have nobody to feed our prisoners. So it was a, we had to get control of that situation by taking it into our own hands to ensure that we're going to have meals for our prisoners. It also provided jobs. It provided jobs for some people in this county and some bids. So, you know. Don't armchair quarterback this one until, until you know all, all the facts about it. Also, the pool. I'm hearing things about, why doesn't this county have a pool? Why aren't you doing anything? You know, again, we've got drawings for a pool, we've got location for a pool, we've got a request, a formal request in Raleigh, sitting on a desk right now, that hopefully will be heard in the next session on getting us grant money for a pool for this meeting. So, you know, we're working on that, and we've taken steps over the past two to three years to try to make that happen. The wheels turn very slowly. And the last thing I want to say is about our county employees. HR Director, I understand the struggles with retaining, getting people in. And this job market is like none I've ever seen. COVID changed, changed everything. I just want to say that I'm very fortunate to have good employees at my workplace. It's hard to keep good employees now, you've got everybody wanting them. And this county has some of the best employees, barring. I hear stories all the time about how a county employee, I had a flat tire, and they stopped and helped me fix my tire. I hear rave reviews about our EMS workers and our, our law enforcement people. You've always got those out there that want to throw, throw darts and complain and fuss, but, you know, I feel confident that if I called 911, somebody would be at my house pronto. Not just because I'm a county Commissioner, they would be at your house pronto. We have people here who care about their jobs. We have a rec director who spends every Saturday coaching your kids. And we have a facilities director here who not only oversees our landfill, but our emergency services. We have a lady that, that does our 911 mapping, who has two very gravely ill children at hospital, far away, but she's, she's doing her work in there. These folks are second to none, and I just want to back off what Michael said. I just want to thank all of them for what they do.
Thank you. Timmy?
Probably said enough, really. But, yeah, I just, I think we need to add to what Michael said about the employees. That is one of the things that I have gained a lot of appreciation for as becoming a Commissioner, is understanding the work that each one does, and the way their teams work, and understand that we have, in Allegheny County, we have a great team. And it goes from, you know, whether it's in this department, whether it's DSS, whether it's, you know, the whole EMS, Sheriff's Department, whatever, I mean, they all have their different things. And we also need to understand, too, that, you know, sometimes we, we get an email here and there, and somebody's complaining about something, and I, my first thing is, it's always one side of it, and, you know, there's always a bigger story to that than ever, but we're all humans, and, but we all strive to do better things, and I see that in all, even in, in our department here, you know? I don't know what it was before I came here, I just, I've seen it improve over the last couple of years, and it's, it's stout, it's strong, and I've gained a ton of appreciation for what everybody does here. And it's, it's something I think, that I don't think the, the, I don't think the county people realize sometimes unless they go, come to one of our departments, and they're paying for license tag or taxes, I don't, I don't, I didn't, I really didn't understand it altogether. Worked with the building department, and Murray's office, and some of that, but we have a great bunch of folks, and I am so happy about that, and I'm, I'm proud to be a part of it, because it's, it is something that I'm not sure how other counties, how they work with it. I know they deal with a lot more people, but I am, I'm really proud of the bunch we have, and we see it all the time, and that's the reason that, you know, when it comes to trying to make things better for them, whether it's raises or benefits, it makes our job a lot easier and decisions, trying to move that forward. Do want to add to also, to, you know, try to, a couple of things, what Michelle was talking about, we have, and that's something else I think that probably ought to be put out there, is to add to what Michelle says. We have been working with our representatives, we've had meetings with them, we've took them out and had site visits, so much so that I've been in, I've been having conversations with Mr. Pickett, and trying to stay up to date about what's happening in Raleigh, that, you know, some of the sites, things that he's seen, he said, "This is something that would be a good argument in Raleigh, that this is a need for Allegheny," you know, whether it's a transfer station, or even the recreational facilities, you know, it is a need, really, because we have that, we don't have that. But the point is, it is a slow process, and I may be, I may be like Bobby and lost all my hair most of it by then, and really gray by the time we get it, but it's still worth, it's still worth working for. And it is part, back to our, what part of our job, you know, trying to do things to make Allegheny better. But I do think a short, short session of what information I've got is going to be a little bit more limited on funding, but at the same time, I still think there's some positive signs and information coming from Raleigh that we may get something to help us with some of our needs. But next year, when it comes around, it may be a better opportunity for some of the recreational things, but still, it's all, to me, it's, it's very positive, and just thankful for that. But at the same time, I think the county should know that we constantly are working, and we are having conversations with our representatives to help us, because we do have a low tax base, and our population does not allow us to spend big monies for projects, so we have to rely a lot on grants and funding from the state, and really, that's, that's what we have to work hard for, so.
Greg?
If people in the county, if you have a county employee out there, buy their dinner. I bought four of them, they're laced, and just get out somewhere, sell them out. They wouldn't expect you to do this, you know, you know, you do appreciate it. I ain't here much through the week, so I can get yours. Just a weekend help, I run.
Thank you. Just a few quick things before we go into closed session. I'd like to remind all the people that are traveling the highways, this is a busy time of year for the farmers. A season is in full swing, and you've got a lot of tractors pulling equipment up and down the road. And most, most people driving these tractors try to pull over when they, when they feel there's a safe place and let the traffic go by. But I'm not advocating that you break the highway rules, but sometimes, when you see a straightaway, and there's a double yellow line, and there's a tractor doing 10, 12 miles an hour, just, I've known people to swing out and pass them. I'm not saying do that, but I've noticed people do that. Other thing, with the summertime coming, I've read some articles about people leaving children in a hot car, and leaving animals in a hot car. So remember, when those windows are rolled up and the sun is shining, it just takes a very few minutes for that temperature to really, really reach a dangerous point. I talked to Deb a minute ago, I told her I was at the Fiber Fest, I thought it was a great event. I would just like to see more and more events, and I think the intent of the county Commissioners and the intent of the Fairgrounds Advisory Board is to make that one of the best venues that we have in the county. So I look forward to working together to try to, try to improve. I think we've got a great place, it just needs some fine tuning. With that being said, we need, Heather, do you have any comments? Mr. Carter, additional? Daniel? April?
No, thank you.
You're not even fishing this weekend, I'm proud of you. With that being said, we have a request for closed session pursuant to GS 143-31811. Closed session, A, permitted purposes, number three, to consult with an attorney, number five, to establish or to instruct the public. Number five, to establish or to instruct the public body staff to negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken on behalf of the public body in negotiating. And number six, personnel. And with the personnel, we would, in that section, would like to invite David Spicer to attend. So, I need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, like what? We're gonna stay in here, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
So, we need to put the signage on the doors. And let's take a five-minute break. Anybody need to use the restroom?
Appreciate it.